Okay, we are called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, August 19th, 2024. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, as Batavia is experiencing one of the more delightful and successful summer seasons we've had in quite a while, just we want to offer a word of thanks for all the amenities and all the people and all the good work just being done by Batavia Main Street and the Batavia Chamber of Commerce and our city staffs to bring together all these events and activities which are so well received. And I've had a number of folks indicate to me rather recently how pleased they are to live in Batavia where quote unquote, so many nice things happen and so many great people are working in support of the community in whatever their fashion may be. And how lucky is the community we are to have this is our lifestyle in this town. We are very, very thankful for that blessing. Tonight, as always, we want to remember and ask for a special blessing on all those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every man and woman from the United States who is involved in these activities. Tonight, we ask for direction and understanding and envision among the parts of the city council as they act on the items before us, knowing that we are most fortunate to have a group here that in their hearts and minds, they are here to do what they feel is in the very best interest of Batavia and its future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Saron, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Saraza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peiper? Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay? Euer?
Here.
Saron?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
Thank you. Twelve present, two absent.
We have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item four, reminder, if anybody's going to address the city council tonight, we ask that you come forward and use the podium and specifically use the microphone because this is being filmed on BATV and without you at that microphone, it's hard for people on TV to understand what's going on. So appreciate your cooperation in that. But the record effect, Alderman Piper has just came into the room. And moving to five items to be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything tonight?
Yes, Your Honor, we do have an executive session that we need for litigation. So we'll add that in as item 18.
You want that before item 10, you say, or?
Eighteen.
Eight, oh, eighteen.
We'll put that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Make that as a motion so we amend the agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to amend the agenda to add the executive session. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Saraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, one absent.
Motion's approved. Moving then to six, the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Beck, you have that, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for April 9th, May 28th, June 25th, and July 9th, 2024, and the plan commission minutes from July 17th, 2024. And for approval, the August 16th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,014,191.27. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,889,258.17. And for approval, the COW executive session minutes from January 9th, 2024, January 23rd, 2024, January 30th, 2024, February 13th, March 12th, April 9th, and June of 2024. An ordinance 2024-55 proposing SSA 71 Ashton Ridge subdivision. Resolution 2024-106-R, authorization to execute a contract for the 2024-2025 snow and ice removal services with Kozak Custom Landscaping. Ordinance 2024-57, conditional use for a massage therapy establishment at 103 East Wilson Street, Zen Loft Collective. Resolution 2024-108-R, authorizing execution of a license for installation of artwork on public property. Ordinance 2024-54, execution of escrow agreement by and between City of Batavia, Byer, and Aiken Properties LLC for 330 through 338 Webster Street. Ordinance 2024-53, execution of a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of 330 through 338 Webster Street. And for approval, a Class G special use liquor license for the September 1st, 2024 Batavia Block Party organized by Batavia Main Street. Your Honor, I'd move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion in second for the approval of the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Saraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved for the consent agenda. Moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that wants to address the council? It's not? Okay. Moving to eight, which is a presentation update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. And it says Jerry Ruth is going to be here, but we have the main man, Mr. Trotter himself, so.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening. Tonight's presentation for an update on the wastewater treatment plant. What you're looking at on the screen is an aerial photo from the south looking north. The large building there is the main building built in the last phase. On the left-hand side, you'll see the new headworks going up. That facility there provides screening, grit removal, as well as some flow control for the overall structures. Behind there in the background is where the excess flow structure used to be. As you know, there were some failures with that structure and therefore, in this project, we're replacing that structure with four primary clarifiers. So, just a different view than you've been seeing over the last couple of months. Let's see. Phase two, A rehabilitation, work that is ongoing is the bike path retaining wall and the bike path itself that's just immediately to the west of the plant. The headworks, elevated slab and retaining walls are ongoing as well. They're at the north end of the plant. We'll be talking a little bit more about the primary clarifiers and the construction of those facilities. They're used for settling of the solids as it comes into the wastewater plant. The PCCB is a control building for primary sludge and it's a diversion structure to the rest of the biological process. That's under construction. The UV building, I'll be showing you some pictures there. We're moving along with that. And then within the sludge handling building, some temporary sludge thickening processes. Moving quickly, as far as the off-site is concerned, as most of you know, Water Street is, for the most part, constructed. There's some minor restoration that is ongoing with some curb. This is the retaining wall that's being installed for the bike path that's going in. Overall, we ran into a few delays. There were some unknown roof drainage that was coming from the building to the west that had to be realigned as part of the project. But this gives you an idea of what's going on. And the fence has just been installed. So if you're looking at these aerial photographs, this is just before they installed the fence. Basically, we're right over Shumway, looking to the west. This is an interior view of the ground floor slab of the new headworks. Obviously, they're setting the vapor barrier and rebar, and that is the floor being placed. The structure has moved along quite nicely. The forming and decking for the second level is in place and being poured over the next couple of weeks. So, the structure itself is coming along fine. And, so, that's an aerial a month ago, and that's where we are at the moment, just as an update. The excess flow diversion structure and the Rossowage wet wells is a new structure that's going on beyond the excess flow clarifiers. There are two structures that look like they are separate here, but ultimately, there will be a building in between them. That structure is located on the main drive if you extend down Shumway into the wastewater plant. So that was a month ago, and that's today. The UV structure is where the disinfection happens within the treatment plant. This is the newest fixtures of the structure itself. The brickwork has been done. Most of the interior work has been done. We're waiting on equipment and electrical switchgear for it. So, that was an aerial from a month ago, and again, the aerial today. As you can see, the site is coming along. With respect to cost on the overall project, from a progress standpoint, roughly forty percent of the cost has been expended, thirty-three percent of the progress by schedule only. So, we're ahead of on the earned value. The project will be completed hopefully on time. That is what we're saying today. If you look at change orders within the project so far, there's been sixty-two thousand or point one percent. Overall schedule update, the bike path had been delayed by a couple of weeks just because of those drainage lines, and will be completed at the end of August. It could be a little bit later depending on how that restoration goes. But the UV will be completed in January of 2025, but it will be almost a year and nine months before the processes are fully put online with the new headworks and new primaries. That is all I have, Mayor. Any questions?
Any questions, Richard Trotter? I have one. I was down there the other day walking around, and I was looking specifically, we had a gentleman in Batavia in the early 1980s by the name of Richard James. He lived over on Elm Street. And he worked very closely with Phil Elstrom, who was then the Kane County Board Chairman when they were installing the first bike trail through there. And one of the things we wanted to do was kind of get people off Batavia Avenue and get them down there on the river. And he came up with some ideas about how to do it, and Phil liked it and paid for it and whatever have you. So unfortunately, Mr. James died a couple of years ago of cancer, and a nice plaque was made, and it's mounted on the side of your wall down there. In the new building, there's about this much room between your older building and the new building. So anybody who wanted to read the plaque couldn't see it. So I guess what I'm asking is, could you have your staff or somebody make sure we get that plaque taken off the building and put someplace on the new bicycle trail so that people riding down there can see it?
Absolutely. I will work with city staff to find the location, and we will have that relocated.
It's just, it's, you know, something that really needs to be done. And, you know, I like the idea that we have it there because I think it sends a message to the future generations. If you got a good idea, come down and talk to the city fathers, and maybe you can get it done. And this guy was very successful in having that take place. So I think it's a story that needs to be kept for future generations. We've got a couple of other things down, not necessarily on your plant. We got another one there on the riverbank in honor of Linnea Miller, who was one of our aldermen for a number of years. And she had some ideas about, you know, getting birds and whatever in there. So, that got erected. So there's several unique Batavisms down there on the river that I really want to make sure we treat with great care and comfort. And that one where I'm talking about, I think there's got to be someplace on the bike trail. And if you confer with the staff, we'll come up with a spot that we can have that erected and put there. You don't have to make the plaque over again, just move it, so.
Done, sir.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Appreciate you coming down.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I happened to miss this when we were doing the consent agenda, but a representative from Zen Loft is here. And I know that during the last meeting, we had invited her down to speak to her business. I don't know if this is something that we can do now or have later on.
I don't have any problem with it. Does anybody in the council have any problems? Come on up and give us your words.
Hi, I'm Emily. We're not at our grand opening, so thank you for coming. I had a presentation at one point, but I just wanted to talk about how to book for massage. So I got our website up and running so people can submit a request. I don't want people to be able to book immediately online. I'd like to be able to read the request and vet them first. But there's now a formal way where they can see my schedule and submit a formal request, fill out their intake form, list any questions or concerns they might have, and then I can review that and then contact them directly and then invite them to book with me. So I created a link for that, but I don't see it up. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Anybody on the council have any questions?
What would the website be? I mean, we're on TV now, so that'll at least get that up.
Right. So, it's sunshinewellnessservices.com. And then I just created two buttons. I figured out how to do that. And so one says Aurora, and that will go to online booking, but in the Aurora location. And then the other one just says Batavia, and it will go to the new location. And that one, you can submit a request. But if people did want to book online, it would just be at the Aurora location, which is right down the river.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Anybody else have comments or questions? Do you have anything further you want to say? Or appreciate you coming down and?
I just appreciate the opportunity to let me speak and plead my case. And I'm excited about working in Batavia.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Got anything? All right. Item nine is reapportment of Robert Canishu to the Batavia Police Pension Board for a two-year term. Would somebody make that a motion?
Would somebody make that a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Sorry, we had a Wolf and then?
Yeah. Solfa then.
I made the motion and then I was second.
Solfa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Good, motion's approved. Now, item 10 is appointment of Mark Allen to the Batavia Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term. And what's going on here is, is that Scott Bunnings talked to me a couple of times. We've had several situations in the last three or four months where we called for meetings of the Batavia Historical Preservation Commission and we don't get enough people here to legally have a quorum to have the meeting. We just had this happen again, I believe it was last Monday night. And we have a vacancy on the commission that we need to fill. I've talked with Mr. Allen. He's a lifelong Batavian and his family's been knee-deep in history and he's lived on Union Avenue all his life, so he knows it forward and backward. And he's agreed to become the new commissioner on the Historic Preservation Commission. The one thing I will tell you about him is I don't think we have to worry about him missing the meetings. And we've got some that I may have to come back to you and I've talked to several of them on here now that aren't showing up like they should. And we're trying to get this kind of resolved and Scott's talked to them and others, we're trying to get this going because, you know, that's a pretty important group of people we've got there. And when we don't have the quorum, it makes the city look bad, the commission look bad and, you know, it sends a message that we really don't care or something. So we want to make sure we've got people on the commission to do the work. So I'd ask for a motion and second to approve Mark Allen for the Historic Preservation Commission. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wolf, second by Solfa. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thank you very much. Moving to 11, which is presentation of the BATAC Quarterly Update. Steve?
Good evening, council members. My name is Steve Erickson. I'm the chairman of the Active Transportation Commission in Batavia and thanks for inviting me to give an update on what we've been working on and what is coming up in the future. Tonight, I'm going to share with you some changes that are happening with our group, some projects that we've recently completed and what's coming up both in the short term and in the long term. With our group, we are approaching the one-year anniversary of the new charter that includes both pedestrian and cycling, so we're excited to reach that milestone. We're also approaching the vacancy, our upcoming vacancies of two positions and we've had a lot of interest in new commissioners joining the group. We interviewed or met a few at our August monthly meeting and we're looking forward to meeting a few more at our next meeting. And once we've met all interested candidates, we'll make recommendations and decisions about who we think is best to join the group. And those will be three-year terms and they'll replace commissioners that have been with the commission for quite some time. Unfortunately, that means we will be saying farewell to some commissioners, including one Joanne Spitz, who has been with the commission since its inception years and years and years ago. She has a notebook that she has been capturing notes for over 10 years and she just recently filled out the very last page of what I assume is like a 200-page notebook. She has been capturing notes at every meeting for all those years. So I thought it was a fitting end to her time on the commission to complete that notebook and transition out of that role. We're also going to be promoting two new current commissioners into chair and vice chair capacities. I'm going to be stepping down as chairman of the commission and we're working through a transition plan to bring two members that have been a part of the commission into those roles to work together to serve and continue the work that the group has been doing. That's everything that's been going on with the group itself. Couple of recent projects that we've been working on and have completed. The first is something that Jared shared with you back in February and that was recommendations on how to make the intersection at First and Water safer. And we shared some recommendations and I'm pleased to say that on my walk over here, I saw that those had been deployed. There is road striping, there are bollards, there's shorter distances for pedestrians to cross that street and make it safe for both riders and walkers. And we've also invested in new signage for all of the schools throughout Batavia to promote walk and roll to school day. Looking at the short-term projects that we've been working on, there is a road diet, I'm sure you're all familiar with the road diet on Route 31. We're cautiously optimistic that that will still be approved and moved forward in the fall of this year, the weather dependent, as I understand, but we're excited to see that move forward.
The striping plan is next.
Great, I'll stick around for that.
Oh, Main Street's in between yet.
Yeah. We're also, we're waiting on the federal, we're waiting on Illinois to approve the new federal MUTCD laws, which I wrote down so I could tell you. It's the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices that dictates what signage is appropriate to put on roads. And there's some new signage that will more accurately reflect how cyclists and drivers can use and interact with one another on roadways. And we're waiting on Illinois to approve that. Once that happens, we'll be able to make those recommendations and hopefully get those approved. And then we're also working with a number of different organizations and entities to craft recommendations on how e-bikes can be used on the trails and roads in the greater Batavia area. Long-term, we are continuing to work through the implementation of the 10-year bicycle plan. And one of the things that's most important to me as a father of young kids is the connection of different segments of trail throughout the city. There's a lot of trails, there's a lot of bike paths, there's a lot of areas where cyclists can use the road, but a lot of them are not connected to one another. So less confident riders are going to have a difficult time or shy away from using all of the trails together because they're not able to get from one section to another. And finally, we continue to pursue the silver level status for a bike-friendly city. We are currently a bronze level city. We've been bronze for quite some time and we are working on the achievement of that silver level status. It does require some investment. That's why I have listed it as a long-term strategy. Some of the criteria for silver level cities are ratios of bike paths to roads and that takes time to invest in the necessary infrastructure to increase that ratio. So we're working with members of the planning committee, Gary, and the police department who join us at each meeting to understand how we can implement those changes and work through those to approach that silver level status. That's the end of my presentation. Thanks for inviting me and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I have a question regarding attaining the silver status. That ratio intrigues me. How do they account for like a woo-nurf or things like that as far as what's a, you know, shared space or even sharrows or combined on street lanes?
So as I understand the criteria, and it is a range, there's not a fixed number that cities must qualify for. It's a ratio of total road miles versus total bike path miles. So that would be inclusive of both trail that is on-road, bike lanes, as well as trail like Fox River Trail. So, but the, the ratio is quite high and there's some more bike paths to be added before we'll meet that criteria.
Question on that, do they have to all be striped or just designated that they're bike trails? Because I know some of the connections that we have and some of the things that the advisory committee has come up with are in the plan, but they aren't striped yet or they're not, you know, formally done. Do they have to get to that point to qualify for that?
Yes. Yeah, they would be, they would need to be in place, yeah, rather than planned, yeah.
Okay. Questions? Gary?
I just wanted to say something. Mr. Erickson's kind of modest. He didn't mention the fact that he's stepping down as chair after also serving the committee for several years. So he will be relocating his family out of town, but I just wanted to make you guys all aware of his service and he'll be leaving, so.
Thank you.
I was going to make some mention of that myself when you got done, but I certainly want on behalf of the city council and the community, thank you for a lot of unknown hours that you've spent researching and reviewing and looking and talking. And this has not been an easy job to get you to the point we are. So I thank you for kind of making this thing move in the right direction. So thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right, moving then to item number 12, which is a report from Main Street and our chairman, Beth, is here with us tonight to give us the update.
Thank you. I want to start off with cocktails in the park. Thank you to everybody who came. Thank you to city staff and the police department for all the help that you guys provided. We really appreciate it. This event is our primary fundraiser for the year. It is a committed, a committee of seven hard-working staff. For this event, we had over 250 volunteer hours, over 125 bottles of liquor, wine and beer donated, 10 downtown restaurants participated. We received over $2,500 in items to be raffled off and we had over 550 guests that were enjoying downtown. It was a really nice night. There was no rain, which was amazing. But thank you to you guys that came and it was just another really great event. It just, you know, it's one of those things that makes me love Batavia so much. Next thing in the news, we have, I might have mentioned this before, but American Express and the Main Street America had the backing small business grant. We were lucky enough to have three businesses be awarded the $10,000 grants. Sturdy Shelter, Limestone Coffee and Tea, and Sidecar Supper Club. So 500 businesses from around the country were awarded these and now they are eligible for a $30,000 enhancement grant. And of those 500 recipients, 25 will receive this award. So we're wishing all of those businesses good luck. We are also continuing our regional marketing plan. So we've been doing some social media ads and Google ads and those go, will be anything. We had a variety, some said dine shop and enjoy Batavia, some said plan your day out. We've had good success with that on the social media. The 90 Day, we had over 38,000 impressions with over 5,500 clicks and those clicks were up over 300% in July alone. The ads that did the best were focused on spending a day in Batavia and getting out and enjoying Batavia. So those are the ads that were, for the last half of the year, we're really going to be moving more towards that kind of verbiage since it gets the highest click rates, but we'll be focusing on the Holiday Sneak Peak, Bat Fest and the Holiday Gift Guide going into the last part of the year. And then thank you to the Batavia Police Department for having us out for National Night Out. It was such a great time. We had a lot of fun talking to the community and it was just a really nice event. And then lastly, we have block party coming up on September 1st. It goes from four to nine. Guests that are 21 and over will pay a $5 admission and that will include, well, there's a Wayback Car Show that the Depot Museum is holding, a Free Family Zone sponsored by Congregational Church of Batavia, and there'll be dance performances, live music and a pie bake-off by the Mothers Club. And that's all I have for today. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions of Beth?
But I'll just say if any kids want to come over, have fun, pictures or sit in cool cars, I'll be down there with a few.
Yeah.
It'll be fun.
Yeah, it's exciting. The Depot Museum is focusing more on antique and unique cars, so we're excited for a little bit of a change in the car show and thanks again.
Beth, I just want to say, I think under your leadership, this whole downtown thing has taken on a new appearance to it. And I've been, you know, I think I've been to every party in the park that's ever been held. And this last one that you just pulled off, I think the weather certainly was a major contributor to it, but the size of that crowd, I don't think I've ever seen that many people down here at this. And after that was participated in, I was upriver to the north end of the county and I had several of the mayors asked me, what's the magic in Batavia that you get all those people down on the river on a Saturday night? And I said, well, it's good management with a great activity. And so they said they were going to have some of their people in their towns call you. I don't know if you've gotten them or not, but they want to get nosy as to what is the secrets in Batavia of how well we do things in this regard. So I feel good about what's happening here because we're getting real positive vibes about what Batavia's doing in its downtown.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. All right, moving then to 13, which is Resolution 2024-109-R approving a contract for Superior Road Stripping Incorporated for Illinois Route 31 Restriping Program with a total amount of costs not to exceed $175,172, which includes a 10% contingency. Anybody have any comments on this one?
Your Honor, this went through the council meeting with unanimous support and this is, I would say, the end of phase one. This is the moment we all want to see happen out there, get that road restriped, just to get it out there again. And I think we have to constantly bring this up on social media that there's so much disinformation out there about what we're doing and the different things that we're doing. People got confused with the bike paths, the bike lanes that we had last week with the restriping for the road diet. So I think it's very important that when people have questions on social media that they look for a link from the city. We're really trying hard to make sure that that gets out there and Laura's doing a great job with that. We just have to try to catch all these posts and get the correct information with the links to the projects so people understand what's happening when we're, whether it's a road project, a building project that's going on, something that we're changing in town. We just have to constantly be on the lookout to make sure that the correct information gets out there. Because I think it's very important that there's a way, we have the information, a way that we get that out there each and every time it gets posted. And I know it's posted sometimes as complaints or just what's happening, whatever, whatever it is, we need to make sure that we do our best to make sure that that gets directed to the right places. I mean, we had maps set out there for the bike path changes during construction and it was nearly impossible for people to stop and read those signs or ask somebody or look for a way to get the information before they get there. So we, I just, I know we're doing a good job. I think we just have to keep constantly looking out for these when they come up. Because I think it's important that people know what reality is going to be that's out there. And I guess that's my little statement on that. And I'm really happy to see that this is here and we're going to get it done this year. Because a month ago, two months ago, it didn't seem like it was going to happen. It was just going to be in virtual bog of iDOT and never get out. So I will make the motion that we recommend, or that we approve, Resolution 2024-109-R, approving a contract with Superior Road Stripping for Illinois Route 31 Restriping Program with a total not to exceed $175,172, which includes 10% contingency.
Second? Question about Alderman Wolf and who, Alderman Er, you want to have the honor of seconding that motion?
Just please second.
We could give it to everybody.
We have seconds and seconds here, okay. I just want to say, I have, you know, been working, I have a fairly close relationship with the State Transportation Secretary Omar because he's the chairman of the CMAP group in Chicago that I'm the vice chairman of. And so I get the chance to, and I, finally, we've been talking about the reconfiguration of Route 31 now for about two or three years. And I finally got Omar's ear a few months back and I now have a letter that I'm going to send out to you in which he says that it's basically been put together. He's a little bit shorthanded at iDOT, getting stuff done in the office. So he's, says he's going to keep his eye on it and get this thing all taken care of for Batavia so that we can get that over with, so.
Phase two and maybe phase three coming for him, so.
Right, right. So we're, we're getting it. But I'll send you a copy of the letter so you can all see what he just sent to me. Okay, we have a motion and a second on this. Any further discussion? Could call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Thank you. Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 14, the administrator's report. Laura?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a few things to mention this evening. On September 10th at 5:45 here at the Government Center, we're hosting a Taco Tuesday, an opportunity to meet with your aldermen. Just a social gathering to get to know the people who represent you in your city government. And this is going to be held at the west parking lot here at the Government Center. Again, September 10th, starting at 5:45, that will be immediately preceding a committee of the whole meeting, which begins at 7 o'clock. We have sent out a Business Pulse survey to local businesses. We emailed it to all of the businesses. If any businesses have not received our email and would like to participate, you can contact Anthony Isom at A-I-S-O-M at bataviail.gov. And also, candidate packets are available online and in person for next April's election. The city of Batavia has seven open positions for aldermanic four-year terms for each of its seven wards. And it also has three two-year terms, which will be available in Ward 3, 4, and 7. And also, the mayor and city clerk positions will also be on that ballot. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Thank you very much.
We have other business in the council? All right, going to 16, the mayor's report. I've kind of already did my report on several, during several of the pieces of business that have been brought to our attention here and acted on. I, I just, I just want to say a word of appreciation to all the members of the city council, because, as you know, I've been the mayor of this place for quite a while now. And in my long term here, I've never had as much positive reaction from the local, other local governments as I have the last year and a half to two years about the city of Batavia and what we are doing and how we are doing it. And I, within the last three weeks, I think I've had at least three different families stop me or stop in or whatever have you and tell me, they have just bought a house in Batavia and they've moved in here because they've heard so many nice things about our town and what a good place it was. And, you know, the last couple of years, there were several people that wanted to move in, get their, get themselves on the football team. And I think that's probably still going on. But we've had other folks now wanting to move in. And I've been up to, we have six senior living communities in town, and I've been in at least three of them in the last three or four weeks. And every one of them has got really nice things to say specifically about our paramedic program at the fire department. Boy, that's a big hit with those folks, because when they need it, they need it. And our people are very, very nice and professional in their handling. And the other one I'm hearing praise about is the Batavia Police Department, because there's been this attack on our senior citizens of trying to get them to surrender credit card numbers and social security numbers and all this other good stuff. And the chief has gone into each one of those complexes and done a presentation about, don't do this, don't give out your numbers to these folks, because this is a scam. And I've had two now tell me that after the chief and was there, they got hit or got asked about it, and they knew exactly what to do, thanks to the Batavia Police Department telling them what was on there. So we're riding high here, and I, I got to credit this council with your attitudes and your visions and your ideas, that that's why we're going so, so very strong. And we got other people, I've had other mayors ask me if they can come down, and I will give them a ride in town and show them what we're doing here, because they would like to steal some ideas from us. So that's good stuff. So we're the place to watch. So thanks for all you do, and keep up the great work, because I think it is working. Okay, we move then to an executive session. Alderman Wolf, you want to make a motion?
Motion that we go into executive session for litigation?
Second. Motion and second for executive session. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Uer?